Sorry. Two minutes after two, I'll be calling this meeting of the resources and infrastructure special meeting to order. We have a forum here, but we are going to be missing what reads today. It will not be available. On the chairman's report, I just wanted to mention that General Manager McElany and I did go on a boat tour of the Marine Sanctuary with the Chumash tribal group and went along the coastline. We basically, I think we ran all the way up by Yiddies and down to Los Otos. While the Chumash council explained to us what this area meant to them, how important it was for us to do it. And their history there went back over fifteen hundred years. And how they wanted all of us to support this becoming a Chumash marine sanctuary. And while they realized there's going to be developments such as the wind farm and all of that, they wanted us to they have heritage there and their history there and their spirit is there. So it was a very interesting tour. We learned a lot about the Chumash tribe. And it was a very good tour. Okay, ad hoc committee reports. Do either the ad hoc committees present have anything to update us on?
No question.
Okay, committee member communications. Anybody have anything that they wish to announce on activities they want to report on or a question for clarification? No? Okay, moving on to the district engineers report, Mr. De Anzo.
Yeah, so the the attachment to item F, I have the table from the the utilities report there that's available for you to review. And if you have any follow up questions, I'm available to answer any of those questions.
Do you want to give us a brief update on what we're doing with the coastal development agreement? We talked about a three days plan, so.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. So we are in the middle right now of reviewing the project description to go over phase one. Legal counsel Tim Carmel has done his review of the, and he sent it over to me, which I will, you know, review and go over the review as well. So after that, you know, we intend to bring that before your board as well to, you know, to actually before the board ad hoc committee first. And then we'll talk through the different comments and the different changes that we propose to make per the board actions. And then after that, we'll bring that before the board to our consideration and discussion for sending it over, you know, for making the changes and then sending it over to update the application.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, so we're going to be talking about the San Simi well field today. That's the purpose of this meeting, but a couple of things on you. On these moving charging stations, you mentioned something about hiring a consultant. I didn't know if you knew that Steve was a retired commercial electrical contractor. And would you like him to give you his input on the electrical part of this as far as moving into the front as we talked about?
Sure. The challenge here, though, is to actually go through the the permitting process with the county and developing a new plan. Because there might also need to be some kind of grading that's required for the places that we intend to put the charging station. It is small, but as far as the electrical, yeah, definitely, I could definitely use your help with that. So, yeah, that would be welcome.
Okay, Steve? Can you know where we are with this thing, Steve? I think we heard from Jim Green on the Stewart Street tank project at the Leighton. And I believe the annual water supply and demand assessment, you're bringing that to the board this next month, but it's going to happen on RNI first, right?
Yes, yes.
Anybody have any questions on anything on engineering part other than what I have?
You mind if I ask on the, we have a dark restroom roughly where we're at on that?
Yeah, so the challenge with that is civil design studios is also doing the work for the skate park. So the time is a little bit shared between those two. We do have a request for information that we're sending to the bathroom supplier, the bathroom vendor. So we will, you know, but I need civil designs input with that to get that response to them. But I'm still hopeful that we'll be able to get that project up and running, you know, get that, get what we need, submit it to the county for or their permit review. Because there was a request for information from the county with that, and this is what we're waiting for, was the specifications for the restroom. So we're, after we go through that process, you know, depending on the county's process of the permitting review, you should be able to get that project up and moving, you know, hopefully, you know, by late summer or even early fall.
Anybody else?
Hello?
Hi.
Can I make a quick comment here?
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Yeah, I just have a question about whether there's been any, this is regard to the global water innovations. Zero liquid discharge pilot project. I was wondering if there's been any investigation of what the permitting requirements are to do this pilot project. Particularly with respect to injecting water, product water either into the CCSD well field or the CCSD percolation ponds. This could be a stumbling block and it could be a cost to the district. So if you have any information on that, we would like to hear it. Thank you.
Do you have anything to say about that?
So we haven't gotten the piloting project agreement yet. So it's difficult to answer specifics. I can predict what it would be. Yes, both regional water quality board and coastal commission staff already knows that we're doing this project or intend to do this pilot project. We don't intend to recheck water into the well field. There's going to be minimal amount actually of product water. And our MPDES already covers, yes, the product water. Yeah, so, yes, there will be some review by coastal and regional board. But I, you know, I don't anticipate any snags on any of those things. But, you know, like I said, I still haven't seen the piloting agreement. So these are educated guesses on my part.
And we're not anticipating any permitting costs other than just staff time for review and, you know, to be transparent with our agencies.
Great. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's my initial report. We're moving on to the consent agenda. And this is consideration to include the April 17th, 2023. Does anybody have any thing that they see in the minutes that needs to be corrected or changed?
No. I move with the check.
If I may, Mr. Webber? Okay, so I'm gonna take a local vote. Mr. Webber?
Hi.
Sam and Dave. Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Okay, we have four eyes and one member absent. Okay, moving on to regular business. This is an update from our district again here on the San Simi Water Main and F Room project. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Bean. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. So you all at home will be able to see what I'm presenting here. Okay, so what I intend to do is I'm going to give just a really brief overview of how we got to where we're at. And just some of the assumptions that we made, you know, to get to where we're at. As you all know, there was a water main break that took place in the middle of this marsh or wetland area there in State Parks property. Our water line runs, you know, under this wetland marsh follows this alignment and approximately connects to this point right here where my arrow is. That was repaired with an HDPE pipe that was fusion welded and it's an overland pipe right now. So it is exposed to the elements and it is exposed to any kind of movement with any floodwaters. The positive about the type of pipe that we have, the HDPE, it's very sturdy. I did ask the design engineer about, you know, reflection of that pipe. They said that they've seen that pipe bend ninety degrees and it's still held. So I gave it a little bit of peace of mind, but it's definitely something that we want to get a permanent fix on. So our original approach was we were going to, we did have a consulting engineer where we go over there and look at the area with us to see what kind of solutions we can come up with for the permitting. So that's essentially how we were going to do it at first. We were going to develop an alternatives analysis. And then develop and from that develop a permitting process. And then after that, go to design and then after that, go to construction. And you know, all of these things that I'm outlining to you today, you know, there's bidding process for each of those steps. Because we thought, we had asked, you know, how much do you think it would cost to even go through the alternatives analysis? And that went, you know, beyond the cost estimate that we could do, you know, for, you know, without having to offer an RFP. So so the choice was made and we used a really good template from another agency regarding the approach that we did. And we wanted to do what we think is the best approach, which is have one firm do all of those things for us. So have all of those expertise under one roof. So there wouldn't have to be this RFP. And then, and then when another job happens, you know, and then an RFP goes again. As a matter of fact, when, if we were to do that, there would be a danger of one firm being disqualified from going on to the next step because they've already done the work in the previous step. So in order to avoid that, we've done this method and the way if you and if you haven't had the opportunity to look at hold on a second. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of a technical difficulty, but I'll just do this. There you go. So what we did was we as I said, we have essentially like a turnkey operation where we want the one firm to be able to handle all of these aspects of the alternatives permitting, design, construction and bidding phase and project closeout phase. And there's another slide that I'm going to go over there to outline all of those. But the nuts and bolts of it is somewhat simple. The project description is lifted right out of the actual RFP. If you were to click on that link, it'll actually show you this project description. And then there's another link that I'll actually show you the description of the RFP and what kind of services that we're asking. But basically, it's like we want to replace the existing fourteen inch diameter portable water line. And also there's a twelve inch diameter wastewater effluent line. All of these were constructed back in the late seventies. Some might actually be done a little earlier because there were like different sections of pipe that were, we can tell were replaced. Like there was a water main break in the nineties that took place and they were able to replace a section of that. So the pipelines will include approximately three thousand foot of constructed, the pipelines are in a construction easement through the wetlands in the California State Parks property. And also there's an effluent line, there's of course the water line that broke, but the effluent line also transports treated wastewater effluent to the percolation ponds located on the CDC CSD owned property down gradient for the well San Simi and wealth yield near the confluence of Vandmore and Creek. So that's a lot of words for basically saying it's over near the percolation pond in where the WRF site is, which I think all of you all are familiar with that. And also note that the portable water line that goes out there is the primary source of water supply for the district. The advantage that we had here when the water line broke was the Santa Rosa well field was able, was up and running and Jim and his crew had just upgraded a lot of the the processes of that, of that water, of that pump. And it was able to be up and running and help supply water during the time that San Simi and Maine was down. Obviously, this is not a sustainable, long term sustainable solution. So we wanted to, it is to the district's advantage to be able to fix this line and get it up, get a permanent solution. The other thing that I want to make note, I call it the there's a water, it's water and wastewater pipeline. Even though the effluent line, the sewer effluent line didn't break, it still runs parallel within the same easement. And if, if one line broke, you know, we want to be able to address the other line because that, you know, the same conditions where that pipe, the water main pipe are also the same conditions that the effluent pipe is experiencing there.
Same materials.
Same materials, exactly. The difference between the two lines, though, is the water line has a higher pressure, like, you know, a little over a hundred PSI. Whereas the effluent line is less than fifty PSI. So that's the advantage. So, so there will be some flexibility here moving forward if if the cost is going to be so prohibitive, we might, there might be a possibility to choose just to do the water line, but that's that's, that's something that I'm planning, I'm planting that idea here now, but I'm still hoping that we can replace both lines. And as far as the scope of services that we requested from this, this RFP, we requested all of these things, project coordination, preliminary engineering evaluation and design, and that includes the the alternatives analysis. We want them to also handle environmental, we want them to handle permit compliance. All of these are tied together because the the project that we pick will define the environmental document that we do. Surveying is going to be crucial in this point because there's a lot of, there's easements. There's potentially different property lines that, you know, will cross that, that the survey crew would need to do. And even the type of project that we choose is going to require some really good survey expertise. Geotechnical investigation is also going to be an important part of this project because it is going to be, the line that we're going to replace is in the marsh. And, you know, no doubt a permit is going to be needed to be requested just to do the geotechnical investigation. And then after all of that is done, like preparation of final plans and specifications, bid phase services, construction phase services, construction phase, like why, why, why would that be a good portion of this project? Because typically, whenever you go through a construction portion of the project, different design issues will come up during the construction phase. And typically, the engineer is required to make a determination whenever such issues in the field are faced. So construction based services is also something we're requiring here. And then project closeout and then project management and administration. So all of those things are are, you know, part of this, the scope of services that we're requesting. Again, you know, like, like I was saying, it's preventing us from having to go out to bid at each stage of the project because that, you know, that already present a scheduling conflict if you were to do that. Or potential of scheduling delays, I should say. So these are the scope of services that we requested. Good news is we, oh, but before I go to the results of what we got, these are some of the alternatives that we proposed for this. Like one of them was to do, just follow the same alignment, you know, from where the you know, where different points of connection. And possibly suggesting some kind of a directional drill idea. So it would be same HDPE pipe, but it would be buried underground. So that's, that's one of the solutions. Another solution, another alternative possibility is to go follow the highway one line, alignment, I should say, and then turn right on San Simulon Creek Road and then make the connection to the well field that way. And also make the connection to the pond or the effluent line that way. Those are a couple of basic alternatives. We, when we spoke with the prospective bidders, you know, we allowed them to have that. We are open to all the other alternatives, you know, these were just the two alternatives that we preliminary identified from initial talks, but we're also open to other alternatives that we haven't considered yet. So I'm letting you know that just to let everyone know what to expect. We received three qualified proposals. If I'm not really at liberty to tell you who they are at this point because we haven't contracted with them yet. So we can't give you any specifics about it. Once we decide to make a choice of who we want to recommend, that's what will give you this specific information. We'll give you the specific information of the costs, their qualifications, their actual proposals. All of those will be disclosed to this group and to the board when the time comes. But when we receive the proposals, we, our staff, Jim, Tristan and I, and Leah helped a lot greatly. We looked at all the proposals, we determined if they met all the minimum qualifications, if they met all of the criteria that we're asking for in the proposals. And even all of the criteria of experience and expertise that we called out in the RFP. So all these three qualified firms made the list. So in that they had good history of design and engineering in Slow County and also in coastal communities. They have good depth of experience in geotechnical permitting and surveying, just to name a couple, you know, a few of the expertise. So what, part of, a part of the proposal process, part of the review process, I should say, was we made interviews of the consultants optional. If need be, and we felt that after going through these proposals and seeing we qualified qualified proposers, we want to do interviews with them and just to talk through their approach. Talk through the solutions that they presented in the proposal. And us be able to ask questions relating to all of these things. So the next step, as far as this concerns, is we recommend a panel of staff to do the, to be part of interview panel. But we also are asking if one of, one of the RNI members would be able to participate in in the interview panel and, you know, preferably someone who has experience in these things too. But, and also present like good eyes because so someone from, a representative from the committee would be able to be part of our panel and when we presented, you know, there could be some, a good update, you know, from what staff said and what the representative from RNA committee, when we bring our recommendations before RNA and eventually to finance staff and eventually to the board. So as far as actions, next steps, we, we hope to do the consultant interviews next week. We have some availability of the consultants on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So that's, that's the proposed time. And also we want to present the results of RNA on the June meeting. So G12, I believe is the meeting. And then discuss the financing alternatives with the finance committee also in the June meeting. I'm asking you, I'm asking your committee to, like, if we want to consider having a joint meeting for that. I'm open to the possibility as well, so I can explain it all in one fell swoop. Because I'm going to tell you now the cost is considerable. So, but it is something that I think is important that we need to do. But it's definitely an issue that we need to bring forward and get as many eyes on it as possible. And, and opportunities, opportunities for grant money and whatever that we would need to finance it. And with that also, we want to be able to present this to the board in the July meeting. We did ask that all the proposers hold their prices for ninety days. The bids came in, in April. Yes, April of the twenty, April twenty fifth. So ninety days and put it in like July twenty fifth. So we're hoping to be able to get this before the board or possible approval in, if not the first meeting, maybe the second meeting of July. And that should give us enough time to be able to process the contract and get it in time so that the bids won't go stale. Good thing about it is that it is a it's, it's, it's not a low bidder gets the job kind of situation. It's, you know, it's, we, it's a qualification space proposal. So typically, there's a little bit more flexibility as far as prices are being held. But, but again, we don't want to take advantage of that and we, we, we want to still hold to the ninety day timeframe. And that's it for as far as my presentation. So the actions is, so, you know, receive this verbal presentation. And also, we asked that your committee give us a suggestion or actually appoint, appoint someone to be part of our interview panel.
I think that probably Mr. Williams has the most experience along these lines.
I, you as some, I'd be happy to serve on the panel. Yeah, I would. Yeah, that would be great.
Would that be all right?
That would be great. Yeah. Question?
Yes.
On the wastewater line, do we have any INI information on that stretch of the line? The question sort of hinting at, do we know the, do we know what shape that lines and does INI show up at every?
No, we don't. We don't. And that's, that's why I suggest that we upgrade that line when we're upgrading this line. The good thing about that is that I have no doubt there is some, there could be some INI, but it's all pressurized pipe. So, so we don't, we don't, we don't ever see those flows go back to the plant. It'll always, it's always pressurized and it goes directly to the perp pond.
Great, thanks.
And this, these are, these are just for design and engineering, not for actual construction?
It's not for actual construction, but they will be involved in the construction phase. Yeah.
Would anyone else have any other questions to raise on this?
No one. All of those activity really is going to occur on state park activity?
Possibly, possibly, because that is one of the alternative lines. But if they, if they choose to go up highway one, then it would be a Caltrans easement.
Have you guys consulted with state parks about these alternatives and which ones?
No, not yet, not yet. But it's definitely, it will be, you know, we will be consulting with them as far as, you know, when the design phase moves forward. No, we we will be consulting with them as far as, you know, when when the design phase moves forward.
There is an alternative that avoids any contact with State Parks as well.
Is that the one going up along the highway?
No. It's, it would be a horizontal drilling that would go underneath. So we start back on Van Gordon Road by our property, by where the blowers used to be staged. But obviously, on the roadside, you'd have about a twenty thousand square foot staging area there. And that would be basically where they begin the drilling process and then we'd exit on the exotic garden side.
So if you did this stayed in the marshland, then both the wastewater effluent line and water line would be the same material that the temporary water name is? And then if instead went up along highway one, would that be more of a metal bike pipe? Because can suspend that H D P E on our bridge?
Well, typically, like it all, all pipes in Caltrans right away needs all needs to be sleeved. So, which it could also still use H D P E as well. I mean, you could still sleeve an H D P E within an H D P E. So, but yeah, but I I I, if it were my preference, I would pick H D P E the whole time, so.
For the entire route?
For the entire one, yes.
Well, I watched them install that H D P E when they were doing that temporary water line. It was fascinating the way that they welded it together.
The fusion, yeah. So the fusion is a jointless pipe is what they get. When they make that fusion, that joint is just as strong as the actual integrity wall of the pipe itself, so, yeah.
And if you were burying it under the marsh, it would lose the same, but it was a temporary.
Yep. Same class, same thickness of wall and everything.
But change the effluent line for that, so I think you were burying.
Right.
So we we have a right of way across State Park. For our pipes. Is there any, anything in the agreement would definitely keep us from doing it that way?
No, we we could, we could keep it.
They can't make us
abandon it.
Yeah, yeah.
And right now, our effluent line follows that alignment now, so.
And they can do that without hitting the yellow line, huh?
Uh, like other.
You're putting two new lines on the ground like that, they can do that.
Oh, well, there there's other solutions too that that could actually utilize those lines. So, yeah.
Okay.
Got you. Anyone else? Anybody out there in the public have any question? I don't see any hands up. Look, I do have a hand up. Mr. Dujic. Hey, I think you can go ahead.
Oh, I apologize. I I'm going to make sure this is the right time for this comment. I missed comments earlier on and this is regarding the ad hoc committee on water storage and flood control, so I don't want to get in in the way of this report.
Okay, let's finish this and then that ad hoc committee didn't have anything to add and we are going through all of those documents you recommended.
Thank you.
That was it?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions, I think.
I have one question. What is the life expectancy on, I mean?
Well, I I think you're gonna, I think your salesperson or whatever would tell you a hundred years. Now, I'm sure they sold H D P E back to everybody saying, this is a lifetime, you'll never have to touch that. And that's probably our number one problem we have in here is the smaller, like the one inch service lines and so forth. But those were installed via bore, so in natural soil, the river rock and so forth, kind of scratching against that pipe through time. But this is a lot thicker wall and this class one fifty that we probably use for this.
I'm just looking at the timeline we're on right now, right, where it's been thirty years, essentially, you said seventy? Forty?
So we're.
Sounds expensive.
I'm sure it's gonna move.
The the H D P, H D P technology hasn't moved drastically even within the last ten years. And I I joke with Jim all the time about this. I go, this is not your grandfather's H D P. So it's before, you know, when the the biases against H D P was that it can't handle a lot of pressure. But that was, you know, our grandfather's H D P. So right now, it's.
We've come a long way.
It's come a long way.
Okay, do we need, we don't need to do any kind of a vote or anything on this, take an action on this? It it just sent you.
Yeah.
Well, consider appointment, okay, I guess that part needs to vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Mr. Williams as the committee member to participate in the panel interviews. Can we have a motion? We have a second.
One second.
Okay. We'll call then Sam and A. Hi, Mr. Seaver.
Hi.
Mr. Webb.
Hi.
Mr. Williams.
Eyes.
Four eyes, one member absent. Okay. Public comment is supposed to be on items on the agenda only because this is a special meeting and I think I answered probably anyway Mr. Dazik's question. So there were no, there were no ad hoc committee reports, so we can't take public comment on that committee report. So join us again on June twelfth, Mr. Dazik, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we done then? Future agenda items. So we're going to have the interview results, are we ready for June twelfth?
Yes.
Okay. We would like to be bringing us the annual water supply and demand.
Yes, since we will be bringing that to the board on the fifteenth, we will show you the those results.
Well, we're going to go R nine twelve and then board fifty.
Board already, yeah.
Yeah, okay. One thing that we didn't do yet, this this group, is in the past, whenever we had new committee members, we reviewed the bylaws. And we didn't do that yet this time because the board ad hoc committee had been working on the bylaws on whether or not they needed updates and the bylaws now have been updated. And we have passed resolutions to accept the changes. So if there's time on the next agenda, I would like to review our standing committee bylaws. Because we should have, we should have done that really in February or March, but because of the changes happening, we didn't. So is there anything else, Mr. Yan, so who would like to see on the agenda?
Nothing comes to mind at the moment.
Okay, anybody else?
In that, is this where we're going to make the June twelfth the meeting with finance? Are we going to finance meet at this time?
No, we're probably going to do it the next time, aren't we? Or go call a special meeting, it'll have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, typically, the the finance committee meets at the, towards the end of the month, so. If we decide to have a joint meeting, I think it would should be at that later.
Later, yeah. Okay. Yeah, we need to work on the schedule a little bit too.
Yeah.
And I don't know what they have scheduled for the end of.
Yeah.
Hey, are we all done? Hey, so, go ahead and adjourn now, what, somebody has any reading slides? And it is three forty. In words, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, take good job.
My folks put off three forty was put off.